Right into our regular meeting, so at this time I'll call this meeting to order. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly, Chair. Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Garretson? Commissioner Granados?
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Here.
Commissioner Leon?
Here.
Commissioner Mirabella? Commissioner Paul Mary Mouded?
Here.
Vice Chair Hudek?
Here.
And Chair Williams?
Here.
Chair, you have seven Commissioners present for this evening's regular meeting.
Thank you. Would you please lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag?
Humbly we ask God, the giver of peace and lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, would you please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act?
The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of New Jersey statutes annotated Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2022, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance, to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2022 in the Administration Building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2022 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Thank you so much. May I have a motion to approve the communications?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kowalski, seconded by Vice Chair Hudek. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Paul Mary Mouded?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hudek?
Aye.
And Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chair, you have seven votes in the affirmative on all the communication.
I'm sorry, say that again?
You have seven votes in the affirmative for the communications.
Thank you so much. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of July, Thursday, July 14th, Agenda Session and Regular Meeting Session, and the minutes of the Agenda Setting and the Regular Meeting Session of Thursday, August 14th of this year? May I have a motion?
Um, County Clerk, excuse me, Mr. Clerk, Madam Chair?
Moved by, we just need a motion first. Moved by Commissioner Paul Mary Mouded. May I have a second, Commissioner Baker?
I'll second.
Second. Okay. All right. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. A roll call on the minutes of the July and August meeting minutes. Commissioner Baker?
I'll have to abstain from the August 11th Agenda Setting Session as well as the August 11th Regular Meeting.
And it's a yes on the July minutes?
Oh, yes to the rest. Thank you.
Understood. Commissioner Granados?
I'd like to abstain from both Agenda and Regular Meeting for July and August, please.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes, I believe the Chair said August 14th and not August 11th.
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant August 11th.
But, and yes on the August meetings and abstain on July 14th.
Thank you. Commissioner Leon?
Aye on the July meetings and abstain for the Agenda Setting and Regular Meeting August 11th.
Commissioner Paul Mary Mouded?
Aye to all.
Vice Chair Hudek?
Aye to all.
And Chair Williams?
I abstain on the July 4th Agenda and Regular Meeting and aye to the August meetings, both of them.
Chair, you have four votes in the affirmative and three votes as an abstention on all the minutes, meeting minutes.
Thank you. It was Bastille Day, so maybe that's why. And, yeah, okay. Okay, so, the meeting is now open to the public for the purpose of commenting on resolutions being offered for adoption and/or on any governmental issue that, oh, did I, oh, we didn't vote on it. Oh, gosh.
No, we would like to move on to the ordinance for introduction.
Oh, my gosh. I'm sorry, guys, I skipped a page. All right, so, we, would you please read the ordinance by title?
Chair, certainly. Ordinance number 839-2022. Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Making of Various Public Improvements and the Acquisition of New Additional or Replacement Equipment and Machinery, New Additional Furnishings, New Communication and Signal Systems Equipment, New Information Technology and Telecommunications Equipment, and New Automotive Vehicles, including Original Apparatus and Equipment, In, By, and For the County of Union, State of New Jersey, to Appropriate the Sum of $62,381,711 to Pay the Cost Thereof, to Appropriate State Grants, to Make a Down Payment, to Authorize the Issuance of Bonds to Finance Such Appropriation, and to Provide for the Issuance of Bond Anticipation Notes in Anticipation of the Issuance of Such Bonds.
Thank you so much. At this time, I will ask our Fiscal Chairman, Commissioner Granados, to move this ordinance.
Thank you, Chair. I move Ordinance Number 839-2022 for First Reading and authorize the Clerk of the Board to advertise same in accordance with the law. The public hearing and final reading will be held on October 6th, 2022.
May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Kowalski. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Paul Mary Mouded?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hudek?
Aye.
And Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chair, you have seven votes in the affirmative on the Ordinance Number 839-2022.
Thank you so much. And now, the meeting is open to the public for the purpose of commenting on resolutions being offered for adoption and/or on any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern. Kindly state your name and town of residence for a record, and if you are speaking on a resolution on our agenda, please note the resolution number to which you're referring, and please adhere to the five-minute time limit. The floor is open.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Commissioner Board. Bruce Patterson Garwood. Summer's over. Just general comments first, and Dr. Garrett's anywhere she may be, but anyway, I hope you enjoyed the summer. General comments first. At the UCI-A meeting, which was last night, it was stated there was leftover money from the 2012 UCI-A Correctional Facility bonding, but unfortunately, no dollar amount was noted. I'm just wondering if somebody could actually note what that amount was. And also, I see a introduction of a $62 million bond, 839-2022. It's probably going to total out to be one of the larger borrowings we have seen in years at the county. I'll be putting it in an Oprah to take a look at the backup, you know, and I'll probably be commenting on it when it does come up to vote. REZO 738 is paying McKesson of Virginia $25,000 for performing flu vaccinations for the year 2021. Is this a new program that the county has started? The vaccinations are just for the flu itself, although it says August through October 2021. There's another resolution on the Agenda, 771, for $22,000 for the same flu program, but that's for the 2022 window. But these windows are basically over, and I'm just wondering why we're doing this all after the fact. REZO 757 is giving USA Architects in Somerville $20,000 for a space study of county buildings at 921 Elizabeth Avenue and 40 Parker Road. I'd like to please explain what this is about, and I thought Director Guzzo did a space study of our county operations about eight years ago. REZO 762 is an open-ended not-to-exceed contract for 3/4 of a million to Morton Salt for road salt for the winter season. Do we have any salt left over from the previous winter? How much did we spend last winter, and how much did the county towns reimburse the county for their portions since they also asked for salt? REZO 769 amending a resolution, amending a resolution trail for area plan contract spending plan, not totaling 8.3 million. Back in February this year, the resolution was for actually 4.7 million, and then it was added on and added on, suddenly up to 8.3 million, nearly double the original. Please, for the public, please explain why this additional $3.6 million add is to this plan. REZO 774 giving B&amp;B Press of Lebanon, New Jersey more money, now totaling $653,000 for printing services based on the new election law. You did ask questions about that, thank you very much. But avoiding my usual concern about huge election-related spending, have we done ever a comparison analysis of other county election spending to assure we are not actually abusing all this tax money that goes to your favorite printing companies? And if it's a not-to-exceed, why are we actually adding more money to the not-to-exceed number? REZO 779, finally settling the contract negotiations with CWA 1080, outstanding for years. It's good to finally settle with the unions, thank you very much. They came in front of you last year after you gave out 8%, 9%, 11%, and 18% raises to your favorite people, stating meanwhile you were stonewalling their negotiations, especially after they were working on the front line during the COVID pandemic. Question, could you please give an overview of what the final negotiations occurred, salary increases and benefits? Hopefully, it's 18%, much like you gave your favorite people. REZO 788 is giving law firm Dakota's Fitzpatrick another $50,000, a total $330,000 for a lawsuit of HC Equities versus UC et al. This has become a huge amount of monies for legal costs. Questions, please give an overview of this lawsuit to the public, and also, who are the et al. mentioned in the lawsuit? And actually, this is a question I did ask before, but for the public, just please respond. REZO 789 giving Cologie Simmons $25,000 for a lawsuit Sergeant Almanazar versus Union County. This I may speak on another time, but it looks like a pretty bad accusation of old boys' club run out of the county police department, and in fact, over the many years for the County Watcher's website, it's really pervasive through Union County government. Please give an overview of this lawsuit for the public. And appointing Mr., 790, appointing Mr. Buchwald to the Union County Improvement Authority.
Mr. Patterson, your time is up. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Just going to ask, how come you don't approve my appointment to the Union County Improvement Authority? Send me your resume. Send me your resume.
Okay.
Looking forward to it.
So there were a number of questions on resolutions, and I believe County Manager's going to take a number of them, 738, 757, 779, so...
I'll take it away. Thank you, Chair. For the question about the flu resolutions, as Director Moran stated earlier, in 2020, we administered 1,700 flu vaccines. In 2021, we administered about 950, and it is timely because this is the beginning of flu season, not the end, so it is right on schedule. For the CWA contract, it's a four-year contract, and it contains the usual terms that we agree with, with salaries and benefits. For the space study, it's more of a architectural design to see what the best use of those spaces are, the best configurations to fit as many people in productively as possible. For the bond, the capital introduction tonight, the bond ordinance appropriates $62 million, but that does not take into account all the grants that the county receives. The county is only authorizing debt in the amount of about $48 million and change, not 62. So it's about 15 million or so in grant money that we receive for various projects. I believe the last question regarding the IA, that question was answered last night. The total balance being returned to the county is $751.20. That's from the 2012 Correctional Bond Facility bonding. This also goes into some other management tools at the IA. They're cleaning up old accounts from 10 or 20 years ago. In the past year, they've returned $735,000 to the various municipalities, $65,000 to Plainfield Board of Education, $448,000 to Plainfield, $223,000 to Union Township. These dormant accounts have been sitting for 10 or 20 years from the previous administration and just left, forgotten about.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We also had a question. Let's see. Deputy County Manager, number 769?
Through you, Chair. This funding is given out more or less in installments. Actually, this question gets asked every year, and the answer remains the same. It's as it comes in from the federal government, then we take it in, and it's expended out. It's just the way that they dole out the money, and this is the fourth installment of this spending plan.
Thank you so much. Number 774, County Clerk, there was an additional query?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. As to the question about comparable costs in the county, I don't know of a study, however, because of my activity in the Constitutional Officers Association of New Jersey. I know that Union County compares favorably with counties of a like size. So if you compare our cost to, say, Middlesex County, which is more or less comparable, we are about the same. If you compare us to Bergen County, we're not the same because Bergen County has more voting districts than we do. And as to the additional costs, that's a mandated cost. When the legislature passed an act for us to do something, we don't have a choice. We have to do it, and we pay a price for doing it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And then, number 789, County Counsel, if there's any comment you can make on that publicly, please do so.
Thank you, Chair. As to 788, HC Equities, as I've explained each time this question has come up, this is a very large litigation over the course of many years. We've been quite successful in defending it all the way to the New Jersey Supreme Court, but the case is not over, and we are in the right, and so we continue to defend, and we have to pay our lawyer. But they're doing a very good job, and in spite of the amount, it is money well spent. The other matter is a new case. We, as always, are hiring outside counsel, and I can't talk to the specifics of the litigation as it's ongoing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And then, there was a question about our salt distribution purchase. So Director Grazian, that was number 762?
Yes, Chair, through you. I think the question was, do we have any salt left over from last year was one of the questions, and yes, we do. Yeah, we were lucky enough, last year was a pretty light year, and these are not-to-exceed accounts. Last year, we spent $458,000 on salt. It was a $612,000 contract not-to-exceed totally after that. It was 61.53 a ton last year. This year, salt's gone up to 76.94 a ton. So almost 25% increase. Again, these are not-to-exceed. We bid out for 10,000 tons. We used about 6,900 ton last year. We have, like, that's what we spent on it. And then, there's another question about would the towns pay? The towns pay exactly what we pay, so whatever towns are part of our co-op, they use our salt pricing through Morton Salt, which is down at the docks.
Is that Morton?
Morton, yes. Like the table salt. Just like the table salt.
All right.
I think that was every question answered. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The floor is still open. If any other member of the public would like to come forward, please do so now. Okay. Seeing no one else, I will formally close this portion of the meeting, and I would like to ask for a motion to adopt Resolutions 2022-718 through 2022-808.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. It was moved by Commissioner Leon, seconded by Commissioner Baker. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Paul Mary Mouded?
Aye.
And Vice Chair Hudek?
Aye.
And Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chair, that's seven votes in the affirmative on all resolutions?
Thank you so much. Now, we come to Commissioner Reports and Comments, so starting on my left, Commissioner Leon.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Just a reminder that voter registration closes on October 18th. If you haven't registered to vote and would like to do so, please visit ucnj.org/boe/voteroutreach/voter for more information. We also have several great opportunities to register to vote for the November 8th General Election in person at several events that are going on throughout the county. At Roselle Cultural Day in Warren Anco Park on September 17th, Union Library Voter Registration Event Tuesday, September 20th, Linden September to Remember at Linden City Hall in Elizabeth during the Puerto Rican Parade and Festival, at Todd Bowles Field on September 25th, Hillside Health Fair October 1st, and during our Family Fun Day for Hispanic Heritage Month in Rowway Park from 1:00 to 5:00, October 15th. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Granados?
Thank you, Chair. As everyone's aware, during September 15th to October 15th, we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, and this County Commissioner Board continues to celebrate the many values and perspectives that the Hispanic community have provided to our Union County community. And today, we kicked off Hispanic Heritage Month with a celebration at Union College, which had so many students, alumni, personnel, teachers, all together in celebrating the roots of Hispanics and what they've brought not only to Union College, but to the many different industries of education, civic, business, government. And as we are all thankful, on behalf of Commissioner Leon and myself, we want to thank all the members of the Commissioner Board, members of our county family, and the residents of Union County who are outside today for our annual flag-raising ceremony in front of the Union County Courthouse. We honor nearly 200,000 Hispanics residents who call Union County home. We have many events lined up, and everyone is invited to attend. The full schedule of events is as follows. September 17th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m., we have a cultural day at Warren Anco Park Sports Center. September 23rd, 6:30 p.m., movie night in Canto at Warren Anco Park. October 12th, from 6:00 to 9:00, a panel discussion of the history of Union County's Hispanic media connection, King University's North Avenue Academic Building at King University. October 14th, 7:00 p.m., drive-up movie in Canto. We're big fans of in Canto, we see. Salsa lessons beginning at 7:00 p.m. and movie beginning 8:00 p.m. that'll be held at Plainfield High School, 950 Park Avenue. Family Commissioner Leon's slated before October 15th from 1:00 to 5:00. We have Family Fun Day at Rowway River Park. For more information, please visit ucnj.org backslash HHM22. We look forward to everyone celebrating our diversity that makes Union County such a strong place to be in. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Granados. Commissioner Paul Mary Mouded?
Thank you, Chair. And today's flag-raising was really, really nicely done, so good job, Commissioner Granados and Commissioner Leon. And I'm also excited to see in Canto on there twice because it's Adeline's favorite, absolute favorite movie. Good evening, everyone. The County of Union's Office of Health Management is hosting several free clinics in the upcoming weeks. First, they have expanded their COVID-19 testing schedule to include Mondays at the Union County EMS Building in Roselle Park for 5:45 Laurel Avenue from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and Wednesdays at the Plainfield Performing Arts Center, 724 Park Avenue from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The Union County Board of County Commissioners encourages all residents to get their seasonal flu shot as soon as possible this year. Free flu shots will be available at locations throughout Union County beginning on Saturday, September 24th. The free flu shot clinics are open to all Union County residents ages nine and up. Children ages four through eight can also use Union County's free flu shot clinics if they have previously received two flu shots in accordance with the guidance from the CDC. Appointments are strongly encouraged, and residents can schedule an appointment online by visiting www.ucnj.org/flu or calling 908-613-7829. Walk-ups will be seen on a time-allowing basis. Masks are required when visiting one of the Union County clinics. Persons who have fevers, coughing, sneezing, or other signs of illness will not be admitted into the clinic site. For additional updates, visit the upcoming flu drives page on the Union County website. Children and adults in need of a variety of standard immunizations can visit Union County's Immunization Center at 40 Parker Road in Elizabeth. Please note that there is no income eligibility requirement for the COVID-19 or seasonal flu vaccines. Other immunizations are available on an income-eligible basis, and for more information, call the Immunization Center at 908-965-3627 or 908-965-3868. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kowalski?
Thank you, Chair, and I'll add my thanks to Commissioners Granados and Leon for an inspiring opening event for Hispanic Heritage Month. I think we were all very proud to participate, so thanks again. We have a number of recycling events coming up soon in Union County. Residents can bring their personal documents and sensitive papers to Union College on September 17th in Cranford, and on Friday, September 23rd, at the Westfield Pool. The shredding events begin at 9:00 in the morning and finish at 1:00, but best to get there before 1:00 because sometimes the trucks fill up and they have to close early. Also, there's scrap metal recycling. You may bring old metal gutters, fencing, or appliances to dispose of at our free scrap metal recycling in, and that's also, that's twice every month, from April to November, and it will be accepted this Saturday, September 17th, from 9:00 to 12:00 at two of our drop-off centers. One is in Cranford at the Emergency Services Building on Kennelworth Boulevard, and the other in Rowway at Rowway River Park across from the swimming pool. So for a full list of recycling events and what kind of materials are accepted, please go to ucnj.org/recycling. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. Commissioner Baker?
Thank you. The Union County Board of County Commissioners would like to invite all residents to Ride for Freedom 26th, hosted by Rolling Thunder Inc., New Jersey Chapter 2, on September 18th. Departing from Warren Anco Park onto St. George's Avenue in Roselle, kickstands will go up, and the motorcycle rides will begin at 11:30 a.m. sharp. Registration is $10 per motor vehicle, motor vehicle, motorcycle, and all benefits will go to the New Jersey Vietnam Veterans Memorial Foundation, as well as the Vietnam Era Museum. Residents and visitors are highly encouraged to come out and watch. Thank you, Chairman.
You're very welcome. Vice Chair Hudek?
Thank you, Chair. The Union County Board of Commissioners invites all residents to participate in the Fall Fishing Derby for Persons with Disabilities and Special Needs on Saturday, September 17th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Echo Lake Park. The Derby is a wonderful way to celebrate the last days of summer in our parks, and we invite all residents, young and old, to come and enjoy the outdoors in a fun community event. Chairs and fishing poles will be provided at no charge. Participants are also welcome to bring their own chairs and fishing gear. It's a free event, but pre-registration is required. Please visit ucnj.org for more information. And second tomorrow is the county's annual commemoration of POW MIA Remembrance Day, and that'll be held on the steps of the county courthouse on Two Broad Street and Elizabeth at 11:00 a.m. tomorrow, Friday, February 16th. It's an opportunity that the county takes each year to honor those who served our country and were prisoner of wars, and many who are still listed as missing in action. This is the board's manner in which we honor their sacrifice, as well as the, their families who didn't necessarily get closure when they did not return home from war. The ceremony will be emceed by Commissioner Al Mirabella, who is our Veterans Affairs Liaison. So if you're in the area, it's quite a nice ceremony. I encourage you to attend. That's 11:00 a.m. tomorrow at the county courthouse. Thank you, Chair.
You're very welcome. And I just actually have one note. You're very welcome. And I just actually have one note about the Union County Film Commission, which is being reestablished to assist film, TV, or digital media productions in their search for locations. We are prime location. We receive multiple inquiries and requests each week from film companies looking to explore our county, Union County, for locations. The reestablishment of this commission will position our county to maximize the financial impact that the film industry can have in our area. So as you all know, and please share, our county is home to 21 municipalities and offers diverse vibrant landscapes from historic sites, our hiking trails, suburban neighborhoods, to city streets, train stations, restaurants, and so much more. With all these different options, and also, our county being accessible from several major highways, the airport, the seaport, and more, we can transform, well, filmmakers can transform any location into the perfect film set. Most recently, major productions such as FBI Most Wanted, Wu Tang, and American Saga and Smile, which is in theaters now, utilize some of our locations and buildings. So in addition to these prime locations, there are also several tax incentives, including a state tax credit program that could reimburse up to 35% of the costs spent on services provided by New Jersey businesses. We're also within the 25-mile radius of the New York City Production Zone, which brings a whole different set of incentives. So we are ready and able to fulfill most major film and TV production needs, and establishing, what we're establishing, this commission will make the process smoother for all involved. So please share, especially those who have media majors at colleges and universities, let them know that we are indeed open for film and television and other digital media production. Well, we're open for business, right? So I think that was it for all of our comments. Deputy County Manager, any comments? I'm sorry, County Manager. Pardon. A demotion, right?
Happy birthday to Commissioner Leon.
Yes, happy birthday, Commissioner Leon.
Thank you. Sweet 16.
That's right.
Eighteen, eighteen.
Yeah, sweet 18. Okay, so with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, that was moved by Commissioner Baker, and it was seconded by, let's say, Commissioner Palmieri-Mudet. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.